The emerging character area designation on portions of two parcels totaling ten point eight seven acres located north of Lakeland Drive and east of Big Station Camp Boulevard. The change is requested to support the annexation and rezoning of the properties to MU and PGC with the amended preliminary master development plan for Westfield. This is currently going through the city council process right now. This character area is consistent with the adjacent properties and the proposed development, therefore, planning department recommends approval of resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero seventy nine. This reason, this request will require a public hearing and it was advertised in the newspaper as required. And this item will not go on the city council, so this is only a planning commission item. Thank you.
Thank you, Gillian. Do we have a representative for the applicant president?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Cal Gentry, Southeastern Building. We don't have any questions on this middle and appreciate planning's recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Cal. At this time, I'll open a public comment. Is there anyone in the public in the audience who wishes to speak in regards to item number ten? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Questions from the commission. Motion to approve, motion to approve by Matt Harris. Second, Dr. Organe, please. Any discussion? Well, it overlooks very straightforward. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approval, vote number ten indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved. Does this seem faster than Zoom? Item number eleven is resolution number two zero two one dash oh eight one. Nexus Tennessee, formerly known as the Bowls Park, amended preliminary master development plan. Gillian?
Yes. The owner and applicant request the approval of an amended preliminary master development plan for Nexus Tennessee on three parcels totaling six hundred and fifty five point four four acres located north of Red River Road and east of Highway one oh nine. So the proposed amendments include redistributing the overall housing count. So there have still have a total of thirteen hundred and fifty housing units in the R eight PRD section, but there are some redistribution. For single family, it is going from nine fifty to nine sixty six. For single family attached, which is two units attached, that's going from one forty to one twenty six. And for the townhomes, they're going from two sixty to two fifty eight. But this does not change the overall density. They are also changing the traffic circulation patterns in the residential area to include more cul-de-sacs and alter much, but not decrease the open space. So you'll see the one on your screen is what they are proposing to change it to. And then this is what they originally had approved. They are also adjusting the secondary road access location for the estate lots along Highway twenty five. They'll still have their own little road, but they are adjusting the location of it. And they are also establishing the new name of Nexus Tennessee and the corresponding branding to go with that. This amendment also includes a detailed pedestrian network plan for review with one minor change, the sidewalks located in the MU and the PGC area, which is not what we are seeing FMVPs for this evening. They're indicating a five-foot sidewalk in those areas. We would want a six-foot sidewalk for for those areas because it will probably be commercial developments. Staff is otherwise supportive of it. The red is a eight-foot wide multimodal path along Albert Gallatin Avenue and into the MU zone area. So that will be a good amenity for the community. The developer also is proposing to construct a portion of the greenway with this phase. So that is, they're dedicating all of the easement, but they will be constructing a portion of it as well. The planning commission must also decide if this item is a major or a minor amendment. The proposed changes are minimal since the overall density or intensity will not increase in the traffic circulation system. Changes are insignificant with this amendment. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission consider this request a minor amendment to the preliminary master development plan. We wouldn't have a public hearing on this item since we are amending a PMDP and planning staff does recommend approval of the resolution twenty twenty one dash zero eight one with four conditions of approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Gillian. Do we have a representative for the applicant president?
John Haas with Edge Mining, Land Support, Architecture and Design. We're in agreement with all staff comments. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Before we get into questions, let me open it to a public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in regards to item number eleven? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. We'll start with questions. We will vote on whether it's a major or minor, but let's have some questions first.
I have a question. In my notes, I have a question about a crash gate that we discussed near the executive lots, and I don't think I heard Gillian mention that. Is that something that's in the changes or not, or?
I don't think we're doing anything with a crash gate.
No, there is no impact to our commitment to a solution to controlling traffic, non-emergency traffic. So we have not committed to a crash gate. We have not committed to ballards. We have not committed to anything. That will come up when we get to the FMVP section. What we're saying is we are going to control access. I understand there's some concession, some discussion maybe amongst planning and commissioners and so on about what all that means and what that looks like. When we get there, we'll do whatever you want.
So.
It was, I don't remember what all the discussion was, but it was, but I had it written down in my notes that.
You know, it's all wireless and it's not a gate. It's something knocks it down. It's a gate that they press a certain button and the gate opens.
Like a gated community?
So the big question is, do you want enough connectivity that you're willing or promoting that we have a full access there and can access instead of emergency? Like he mentioned, they're fine. Talk about that later.
I'm fine to talk about it later, too.
Which section, that's surprising, which section of the Greenway are y'all building with, which section are y'all constructing?
Well, so this is a document, probably the most important piece of this amendment because this wasn't in the PMDP before, but in working with staff on the greenway and easements and what the pedestrian system was, we, we, we agreed that the best way to do that was with this exhibit. So there's a small piece that we are agreeing to build at this time that it's not that full length. I'm sorry, the full length is not agreed upon to build until we reach agreement with parks. And so what you see in yellow is the easement that we've dedicated. And what we have is a client who wants to build a portion of the greenway. But a portion of that greenway is outside of the easement, but it will connect through, if you remember that triangle up there, if you can point, I don't know where the pointer, but the triangle up there is a fifteen-acre park. It has not been determined. There have never been any real, real meaningful discussions with anyone in the city as to whether that will be public, private. It will be open to the public, but will it be a private park with a public access easement over top of it? Or will it be a public park that is open to the public and maintained by the City of Gallatin? There's improvements. So there's future discussions. There's no commitment on the PMDP to build a portion of the public greenway at this point is what I'm trying to clarify.
Okay.
And what does that say? So, and that is, that's the one that has the yellow line on it? So what, what we have to do though is get with those departments and determine the best way to do that, to get that done. I think the developer's intent is to have that in place with phase, with these FMVPs, that the trail shows up on FMVPs. But the final location, grading, ADA access, all those things are not yet determined. That that will come in working with city, the park department. Chair, the pedestrian circulation plan that you see before you was presented late in the development review stage. And this is appropriate document to add as a condition of approval to the PMDP and each FMVP that we would be discussing a little bit later. And I'm sorry, but, and I think the conditions, a majority of the conditions, if not all, related to this document, and our goal is to, if it's not me, if it's someone else in the developer community that comes in and says, we're buying one of the MU parcels. They, this document's part of the PMDP now, so they just hand it to them and say, you have to build a eight-foot path that's across your five-acre parcel. Here it is. It's part of the agreement. So that's why this document was important.
And Bill, I think if I'm reading it correctly, condition one satisfies what you just stated, doesn't it? Condition one is to update the PMDP document to match the pedestrian plan as approved by the planning commission.
I also added a similar condition to all the FMVPs that they match this plan. That'll be with the future items. Yeah.
Would that, you, did you say you added that or you want us to add that?
I've already added it. It's in for future items with FMVPs. I added a condition that they will match this pedestrian plan. However, it's approved by you guys.
Okay.
So it's taken care of.
All right. We need to hold a vote on whether this is a major or minor amendment. Dr. Organe makes a motion for it to be a minor amendment, second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion on that? Yes.
I have one question. The amount of single housing, single-family housing, what did that come from? Was something townhouses, other stuff exchanged for?
Yes, so they had for the attached units, so the two units, they had a hundred and forty, that went down to a hundred and twenty six. And for the townhomes, it went from two sixty down to two fifty eight. So that's where they got their extra few that went to the single family.
What's the difference in attached and a townhome?
So a townhome is the, is three or more units. The attach is the two, is just two attached units, the villas.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second for it to be considered a minor amendment. I don't believe we voted on that yet. Does any other discussion? Did we vote on that? Okay, thanks. Then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of being considered a minor amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is a minor amendment. At this point, I'll, if there's more discussion, I'll entertain a motion on the item, on item number eleven. Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Wilson to approve item number eleven with all four staff's conditions. Do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Strahden. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for vote. All of those in favor of approval indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved. Thank you.
Yeah, I do have to say really quick, you know, sometimes a good Lord reminds you how old you are in all kinds of different ways. Looked over on this table during that presentation. This is vintage Baker Crossing, which I worked on fifteen, twenty years ago.
Oh, reminded me. We'll move on to item number twelve, which is resolution number two zero two one dash zero eight nine. Nexus Tennessee, Phase One North, Section One and Two, a final master development plan. Gillian?
Yes, the owner and applicant request approval of a final master development plan for Nexus Tennessee, Phase One North. Sections one and two for a hundred and thirty-four single-family residential lots, five open space tracks, and five public rights of way on thirty-five point nine nine acres. Section one will include sixty-two single-family lots and section two will include seventy-two single-family lots. The two sections include five open space tracks totaling eleven point sixty acres. All common area tracks will be maintained by the HOA and all roads will be public in this section. They are providing the buffer yards as required. They have also indicated that there will be extra landscaping behind units that back up to major roads. And they have included some of their sign, monument sign information that will be consistent throughout the development. They will get permits for that. The FMVP also includes a sample of color schemes and architectural elevations. Permitted materials include bricks, stone, stucco, natural wood accents, and hardy plank. The developer is not permitting vinyl and other plastic materials. Color schemes will be limited to natural earth tones and other complementary shades. Any facades with a visible street frontage will be reviewed by the development team with more scrutiny for elevated materials, schemes, and architectural features. The planning department recommends approval of resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero eight nine with fifteen conditions. The applicant is here to answer any questions you might have.
You want to go ahead and present items twelve through fifteen as one, or are they very distinctly?
They're not very distinct. If you would like me to, I can go through them all.
They're all Nexus, different phases, similar to what she's talking about. I think it, I think it would probably be.
If you're fine with that, I'm happy to. The next phase is for Phase One North, Section Three, which is eighty-eight townhomes. Again, all these phases are within the PMDP that we just discussed. It has eighty-eight townhome lots, four open space tracks, and three public rights of way on ten point five five acres located north of Albert Gallatin Avenue Extension and east of Highway one oh nine. The townhomes will be constructed on individual, these simple lots, and the sections will include four open space tracks totaling three point three acres. Again, an HOA will maintain that open space. One thing to note on the townhomes, there is a fifty-foot buffer yard along the rear of these townhomes. That's within the planned business park area. They are proposing to construct half of that with these townhomes, and then when the PVP area comes in, they will construct the other half. Now, this is on the PVP property, so they'll work with easements and everything like that to make sure it's maintained, but this way we get some growth while the townhomes are under construction once they're used, because we don't know when the planned business park will come in. So they'll do half the buffer yard at this time. Again, with this, similar with the architecture, materials will be the same as the single family with similar schemes throughout. Again, any facades that have visible street frontage will be reviewed with more scrutiny and vinyl siding will not be allowed. The planning department recommends approval of resolution number twenty twenty one dash ninety with fifteen conditions. Our third phase that we are talking about today is Phase One South, Section One and Two. This is on the south side of Albert Gallatin, Albert Gallatin Avenue Extension, and this is getting into the gated community portion of this development. Anything south of Albert Gallatin Extension, not including any of the MU zoning, is within the gated active adult community. This is for ninety-six, one hundred and thirty-four single-family residential lots, six open space tracks, and five private rights of way on forty-one point six four acres. Section one will include eighty-four single-family lots and section two will include fifty single-family lots. You can see there'll be the multimodal path along the north side of this development, and then the green will be, will be along the floodplain area on the east side. And then the buffer yards will be provided consistent throughout the development. And they have provided architecture for their gatehouse, which is consistent with their signage and other, the branding that they're doing throughout the development. Again, the same schemes for the architecture. Home buyers will be allowed to select brickstone or hardy siding on front and side rear facades. Additional brickstone bases at the watersheds will be encouraged and vinyl siding is not permitted by the developer. The planning commission does recommend approval of resolution number twenty twenty one dash ninety-one with eighteen conditions. And our last phase is Phase One South, Section Three and Four. This is also located in the gated portion of this development, the active, active adult section. This is for ninety-seven attached single-family homes. So these are the two-unit villas with six open space tracks and two private rights of way on seventeen point eleven acres. Section three will include fifty-two attached single, attached single-family lots and section four will include forty-four attached single-family lots. Again, any open space or roads will be maintained by the HOA and the architecture is similar to the previous phases. Planning Commission or Planning Department recommends approval of resolution number twenty twenty one dash ninety-two with fifteen conditions. Thank you.
Gillian, which, which of these items, if any, included the crash gate that we were just talking about?
None of them do.
None of them, okay. If we have a representative for the applicant, please come forward and state your name for the record and address items twelve through fifteen.
Good evening. Brett Snyder with CSDG. We're in agreement with staff comments and we're here to answer any questions.
Questions?
I don't, I don't have any questions on it. I think staff and applicant did a pretty good job putting it together.
I guess the only question I had was, I heard two things. I heard that the consumer can make their selection of stone, masonry, or hardy board or siding. But then I thought I heard in Gillian's report also that vinyl siding would not be permitted, so.
They can use hardy siding, no vinyl siding.
Oh, very good. Okay, so no vinyl siding at any point.
Correct.
Of course, you mentioned too, the, you know, a stone or brickwater tables encouraged. Is that required throughout or they're just going to encourage that?
We encouraged it and they added that note on there that they will encourage it. Yeah.
And so we've, we've asked other people to do that, so maintenance, it's a good idea.
Question for clarification. You said we've asked other people to encourage it or required?
I, I think we've, we've done both depending on, on the party. So usually where, I don't think we've been as stringent about requiring it where there's more architectural controls on the developer that are more stringent. So in this case, I think it's okay.
Yes, I believe they have their own development, like they're going to have an architecture review and development team looking at everything. And also we said, did that more when, when there were vinyl siding homes because of the maintenance purposes. So there won't be vinyl in this development.
And then I had a question. One of the slides you passed with, had the cul-de-sacs, it's had a note that was going to be finished later on in another phase. Is that typical?
Like that. So those are temporary turnarounds for fire engines and dump trucks and things like that. So once that phase continues on, those will be removed, but they're just for those safety reasons.
And for the applicant, you don't have any objection to item number nine, staff condition number nine, about a sidewalk along the north side of Gallatin Extension?
No, no worries about that.
I'll entertain a motion. I was not at work study.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve. Are you, we voted item by item?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to vote item by item. That's, that's fine. So I'll make a motion to approve with fifteen staff conditions.
There's a motion by Mr. Harris. Second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion on that? It's on item number twelve, the Phase One North, Sections One and Two, and we have a motion to approve with all fifteen staff conditions.
My only comment would be a disclosure. I made it at the work session that I do own some property across the street in Highway twenty five. The city attorney doesn't yell at me when the meeting's over.
Um, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approval of item number twelve indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirteen. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with fifteen staff conditions.
We have a motion by Mr. Harris to approve with fifteen staff conditions and seconded by Mr. Wilson. And you're satisfied with the additional landscape buffering behind any lots that, but Albert Gallatin, that's, that was on the first one, too. They, they've provided something to show that, or?
Yeah, we've got a, there's required buffer yard between those houses and Albert Gallatin.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion on the floor. It was a second about fifteen staff conditions. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of item number thirteen indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number fourteen is entertain a motion. Motion for approval with conditions. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approval with eighteen staff conditions indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And item number fifteen of the group, entertain a motion. I'll make a motion for approval with fifteen staff, all fifteen staff conditions. Second by Mrs. Hibler. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approval indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number sixteen is resolution number two zero two one dash zero nine four. East Camp Business Park Lot Three, State of Tennessee License Bureau amended preliminary master development plan. And this will include a public comment. Josh, are you presenting this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The applicant intends to construct a fifteen hundred and six square foot addition to an existing five thousand six hundred and fifteen square foot building. This is the current driver's license center on North Blue Jay Way. The proposed office public service uses are consistent with the intended purpose of the original East Camp Business Park Lot Three PMDP. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission consider this or request a minor amendment to the preliminary master development plan for East Camp Business Park Lot Three. And staff would also like to strike condition number one. The total disturbed area is less than one acre, so no notice of coverage from TDEC will not be required for this development. And staff recommends. And staff recommends approval of Resolution Number two-zero-two-one dash zero-nine-four.
Thank you, Josh. Do we have a representative for the applicant present? Please come forward and state your name to the record.
Tyler Yubelhar with Intu Group. We agree with all staff comments, but would happy, happily answer any questions you may have.
Questions? I do have one question. I was reading through the staff report. It mentions the floodplain in Condition Number Seven, a floodplain development permit application. Where are you extending this parking lot? That doesn't go into the floodplain, because I remember it was close years ago when this was first built, the floodplain extends way up into that property.
It's just redoing the existing parking that's already there.
It's not.
It is in the floodplain, yes.
Oh, it is in the floodplain?
It is, yeah, so it's an existing, and there's an existing parking lot in the rear of the building. We're just adding parking on the south side of the building.
Oh.
Restriping and redoing, extending the parking around in the back, just add as many spaces as we possibly can.
Okay. So none of that in the back is new park?
There may, there's four additional spaces in the back.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll add to that, the, when the building was originally constructed, the floodplain maps were different than they are now. In two thousand and twelve, they changed, and the bulk of the lot is now in a flood hazard area. So the addition, we'll have, the building is what we're concerned about, will have to be constructed outside of the floodplain, so the finished floor elevation will have to be at least one foot above base floor elevation, a base floor elevation scheme.
Well, if there's no other discussion, we need to decide if it's a major or minor, because this is also a final master development plan. Second, motion, Dr. regain that it is a minor, and did I hear you second, Matt? Harris, second by Matt Harris. Any discussion on whether it's major or minor? It's all a litmus test of being a minor amendment, certainly, so if there's no other discussion, then all in favor of being, all in favor of being considered a minor amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is a minor amendment. I will also open it to a public comment, if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in regards to item sixteen. Please come forward and state your name for the record. Being no one, I will close the public comment. Any other discussions or questions for the applicant or for staff? Seeing none, I will make a motion that we recommend approval of, with eight staff conditions. It'll be the, we'll eliminate Condition Number One, leaving Conditions Two through Nine. We have a second by Mr. Harris. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approval indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And I think I worded that wrong. I said, I made the motion to recommend approval, but this is an item handled straight at Planning Commission, isn't it? This doesn't go to City Council, does it, Bill?
With the minor amendment, Bill, this does not go to City Council.
Then my wording was poor on the motion, but you get the drift. Okay, it was approved. Thank you. Item number seventeen is Resolution Number two-zero-two-one dash oh-nine-five, Walnut Crest Town Homes. It's rezoning with preliminary master development plan. Who's presenting this item?
That would be me, Mr. Chairman.
Gosh.
The applicant is proposing to rezone thirty-two-point-nine acres from CS Commercial Services District to MRO, Multiple Residential and Office District, with a preliminary master development plan for one-hundred-and-sixty-six dwelling multifamily in a horizontal property regime for the property located north of Long Hollow Pike and, well, northeast of the intersection of Long Hollow Pike and State Route one-oh-nine. Dwelling multifamily units are permitted in the MRO district. The overall master plan and rezoning is consistent with the Gallatin on the Move Twenty-Twenty General Development Plan, as outlined on Page Three of the staff report. Also, the proposed project is in the vicinity of the Walnut Grove National Register Historic Property, as indicated by the yellow triangle on the map displayed on your screen. And Winston Place is a recently approved development on the other side of the creek in the general vicinity of the red arrow located on the screen. One of the things that we stressed of great importance at the work session was the transition of intensity of uses from the existing single-family residential on Walnut Crest Drive to, through the backyards to this development. The developer worked very specifically with staff to identify the units as displayed on green, green, what are those called? Squares, green squares on the screen. Those specifically went from four-to-six-unit buildings to duplex units, and also very sensitive to the setback in, to include the buffer between these units and the existing single-family residential, so that there's both a transition in intensity of uses, but also in lot sizes. Staff has expressed throughout the staff report and with the developer that this transition is going to be critically important if this development moves forward and through the FMVP process. This is something that staff will be specifically looking at, the massing building, the massing and scale of these buildings and the relationship to the existing single-family residential on Walnut Crest Drive. This is the Walnut Crest Historic Site, built between eighteen-hundred and eighteen-twenty. It was restored in the nineteen-seventies, I believe. Within the staff report, there was the full write-up from the National Register of Historic Places. This is just at the end of the property on Laura Street. Also, at the work session, we said that we would include information about duplexes that are in the neighborhood. Look on the screen, and also in front of each one of your stations, is a map that shows the general vicinity of the duplex structures within the existing Walnut Crest neighborhood. Specifically, looking at the five units that are on Laura Drive, but the rest of the development will abut single-family, single-family residential dwellings. Based on the finished floor elevations and inside walls, will be highly visible from SR one-oh-nine and Long Hollow Pike, and staff will be paying special attention to the design of either end walls or the back of units, given the high visibility of this site being located on top of a hill and from being a gateway intersection into the city. Overall, the architectural elevations for the attached HPR Town Homes meets the seventy percent brick or stone facade requirements by the Gallatin zoning ordinance. Overall, staff recommends approval of Planning Commission Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero-nine-five, and supports the rezoning to the City Council.
All right, thank you, Josh. Do we have a representative for the applicant present?
Yes, sir. Zach Baker with Greenlit Design. We are in agreement with all comments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Zach. This time, I'll, let me open it to a public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in regards to this item? And I'll close the public comment. Questions, discussion?
Zach, I've got in my notes that on these, that you're going to transition more, that one of the problems were that they were two-story and that the others were just one-story. So what are the new ones going to?
There'll be two-story as well.
Hey, I have down here that two-story doesn't match single-family and present one-story duplexes.
So we discussed more along the lines of the driveways, and we worked that out with staff. And that was, I was under the assumption that it was the driveway was the main issue, not the stories of the building.
So that, was that a problem?
So councilwoman Love, within the elevations, you can see on the screen, the very, the rear elevations do contain a sort of a step-down, so that it's a two-story product, a little bit of a step-down before it reaches the single-story residential. Through the FMVP process, staff can work, continue to work with the developer on the final elevations to pay more attention or specifically focus on that building transition height from two down to one in the, in the specific areas identified where it does abut single-family residential, if that's something that's of interest to you.
As long as it transitions well, that's what is important.
The duplex product, is it the same architecture as the, as the townhomes, just split apart, so it's just two units?
Yes, sir, I do believe so. And that's something we can work with staff at the FMVP level to, you know, make sure everything's consistent.
So, this, I wanted, I want to disclose, I had a conversation with Mr. Hale this afternoon. Just, we discussed some of the concerns I had, and explained to him that I did want to share a bunch of history on this with y'all. This item, to me, is the most important one we'll discuss tonight. Because anybody who's played golf on the seventeenth hole, Long Hall, at five P.M., is really glad they're playing golf and not in their car in traffic trying to get into Gallatin. Why, when they built three-eight-six, they didn't continue it as a no-access all the way to, and tie into one-oh-nine, you know, make a cloverleaf there? Why they didn't do that then? I don't know. Trying to figure that out for years. But about twelve, maybe fifteen years ago, this Planning Commission and the City Council did not listen to our engineering department, when they totally begged us not to allow Thorntons to have a curb-cut access right there, because it would compromise our ability to eventually fix this problem. And the problem is what I call the widowmaker of Sumner County. That's from Long Hollow Pike to the one-oh-nine Long Hollow interchange. It's got to be fixed. And so I've served on the Forward Sumner Economic Partnership Body for the last ten years, and my main focus, serving on that organization, has been how do we fix this problem? Now, we have a really unusual situation. We've, if y'all are familiar with the Net Corridor, we've talked about the improvements to three-eight-six, all the way from Goodnessville, all the way to the state line. Huge project that the NPO became so interested in, they ranked it as a five-star pro, five-star project on a four-star rating scale. Go figure. The Net Corridor got fast-tracked in TDOT's entire timeline, so the Net Corridor improvements, which is making improvements to three-eight-six all the way up, and the improvements being made in Hendersonville right now are being done, and this only started five or six years ago, talking about this, maybe eight years ago, talking about it, and it's already happening with TDOT. They recognize that it's important to fix the Net Corridor. My main focus of the Net Corridor has been this one key section from Long Hollow to one-oh-nine. Sounds like it might never happen, but if we don't get it in front of TDOT, we're never going to be able to grow Gallatin in its man, because that's going to be a constriction point. Believe it or not, TDOT is so interested in fixing this, that we had a meeting with them just two months ago, six weeks ago, specifically about a feasibility study to address this, this one stretch, Long Hollow to one-oh-nine, and they are supposed to give an answer back to us in August about the feasibility of doing this project, if the county and the city can come up with engineering fees to tackle it. Long and short of it is, there's an opportunity that TDOT is really looking at fixing this. But this one, this one property on the northeast corner is kind of a crucial lynchpin to TDOT being able to fix it, because you'd have to do some type of cloverleaf intersection or inverted diamond interchange on the lower section. Here's my concern, is what message does it send to TDOT when they're figuring out right now whether they want to fast-track and include this, fixing this section for Gallatin in Phase One of the Net Corridor, which could, means it could happen in the next three to four years. What kind of message does it send to TDOT if, while they're trying to make that decision, we approve a rezoning and development of the lynchpin that they need in order to make this fix, this repair? I don't know, but I also am very respectful of the fact that we have a property on, and we can't ask him to sit by for years while TDOT deliberates on what to do. But it's so close, it's within thirty or forty-five days from them giving an answer. I'll also give you a little bit more history, is that, oh, I don't know, eight years ago, ten years ago, when Joanne Graves was mayor, she got TDOT to actually do a preliminary study about doing a northern loop to fix this problem, come off of Greenley and tie all the way in up to Hatton Track, where Hatton Track ties in. This is what we talked about the other day, where Randy Jones had foregone the opportunity to have a interchange right there. But we turned them down, as a community. We said no to that, there was a lot of opposition. In my opinion, TDOT's looking at this again. If we send them the wrong signal or turn them down again, it will be sometime in the twenty-second century when they'll consider this again. So, there, I talked a bunch, but this is why this is so important to me. I've been working ten years to try to figure out how to fix a wrong that we did twelve years ago.
They expect a decision from TDOT in the next thirty days?
They're supposed to have a letter to us about August. I don't, that's the first of August of their, the feasibility of doing this, and that is tied to whether the county and Gallatin can agree to come up with five million dollars of engineering fees. If the county and the, and the, and the city come up with five million dollars of engineering fees, and that's not all the city, that's mostly on the county. TDOT is talking about, that's what we'll get an answer to in August. TDOT may put this as part of Phase One of the Net Corridor project. Fixing this could be done in the next five years.
Are you with you on that terrible traffic problem that's through there?
I will, it is, but I also recognize that we can't ask a property owner, and I just want to say to Mr. Hale's credit, he is a outstanding member of the community. He's, he understands the need for this, but I sympathize with the fact that he can't sit and wait for another year go by, or two years, three years, waiting to see if this happens. He's got a piece of property, so.
Will he want to pay with for sixty days?
I did actually ask him if he wanted to move forward, and, and he explained that there is probably six months' worth of engineering to be done. He would like, I don't want to put words in his, Mr. Hale, may I suspend the rules and ask Mr. Hale to come forward and speak on this? I'll make a motion to allow Mr. Hale. We have a second. Mr. Hale, would you come forward? I don't want to speak on your behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did speak about this this afternoon, and my name is Danny Hale, at seven-sixty-one Plantation Boulevard. And thirty-five years ago, when I started in the real estate business, we went to Capitol Hill Day and visited with our senators and legislature down there, and they told me about the city leaders in Gallatin, Sumner County, Wilson County, had all gotten together, and they had decided not to build the eight-forty North Corridor through Sumner County at that time. They wanted to spend that money. Widening one-oh-nine. So for the last thirty-plus years, one-oh-nine has been under construction, and with any luck, maybe next year or the next, they will finish it. So essentially, my entire career has been moving back and forth from Wilson County on a road under construction. That's my biggest concern with saying the state may come in and do something, we don't know yet. We have zoning in place, which is commercial zoning, so I don't think the entitlements, whether it's entitled for residential or commercial, is going to make any difference. We have zoning in place, which is commercial zoning, so I don't think the entitlements, whether it's entitled for residential or commercial, is going to make any difference. What I told Chairman Carrer is we've got about 60 more days before we finalize at the, if, assuming we move forward, at the city council. We can put a stopping point there, maybe at second reading at city council, and hold up on that until we hear from the state. We want to work with the city and the county, but rather, if they require this land, whether it's residential or commercial makes no difference. They're still going to have to figure out what to do. Additionally, you know, it could be more cost beneficial of being a residential zone than a commercial zone anyway. So, and then we've got at least another six months after that, so there's plenty of time to see if the state steps up that want to do a project. But if they do, I don't know what the timeline would be where they would want to step up and, and you know, purchase land. That may be five or 10 years down the road, so those are just the great unknowns. But because Chairman Carrer has been leading this effort, I certainly understand and been involved in the effort, the concern, what we would ask is let's move forward. I'm not going to start building townhomes out there if the state's getting ready to take the land, but we would like to move the process forward. Hopefully, by the time the process is finished, we'll know if the state says this is good, and then we'll have another six months to work with them to see if they actually need it, because they may come back with a design that doesn't include this land. We don't know. So it's all speculative at this point, so we would like to move forward. We think the zoning we're asking for is a better zoning than what is there now conducive to the neighborhood. So, but we are cognitive of the, in fact, I just became aware of it this afternoon, so first I've heard of it. And maybe first many of you have heard about it as well, so what we would like to do is move forward, but we will move forward in baby steps as we go. We're not going to go out there and start throwing townhomes up knowing the state may or may not have an interest in it. So we've got probably through the end of the year that we can kind of slow walk it, and if we get response back from them, you know, maybe we get a timeline, and maybe instead of engineering, maybe land acquisition moves to the top of the list because of our timeline. So, but again, we had no idea about this until today, so we want to be respectful of the problem, we're aware of it, and do what we can, but we don't want to really hold our project up for five years to, to know whether or not it's even going to happen.
Thank you, thank you, Danny. Danny said it much better than I could try to convey what he said. So y'all said that.
Did you say that you, you were afraid that the state might decide not to come through if we had approved this?
I was just stating, I'm not sure what kind of signal that sends to the, to T-Dot if, when they're deliberating, deliberating on the feasibility of this project, if they get informed, oh, well, city council just rezoned and approved 174 townhomes on the key lynchpin piece of property that helps to make it possible, or not, not key lynchpins. This isn't important on the northeast quadrant of this intersection. I got to say, the southeast quadrant of the intersection where we built apartments, that was really important too. The south, the northwest one is the golf course, and the southwest one is totally compromised. So you're never going to get a full cloverleaf there, but you could do an inverted diamond interchange on the lower side and, and have traffic that moves through. Well, that's getting into specifics. I was concerned it might send a mixed signal to the state in the next 30 days.
Is it, is it possible, you know, to make sure we communicate to the state that Mr. Hale's not opposed to working with them?
Yeah.
I don't, yeah, I understand the concern about the signal, but at the same time, as you said, it may actually be better for the state if it's zoned, you know, residential rather than commercial anyway.
Other discussion? I'm only torn on it because I've been working on this problem for 10 years.
I, I, I understand that the problem needs to be fixed, but at the same time, I, I don't think it's fair to the property owner to, to hold their project up indefinitely for something that may never happen.
We approve it now, does that put us under any obligations?
Oh, this has to go to city council.
What we would commit to is not going to final reading city council until after August 1st, so we can at least get that, and then come back into a work study before we go back to the final reading city council, if that's okay with us, more. That way, we, we've teed it up, but I'm willing to have the discussion before things move forward. But if they don't move forward by, you know, end of the year, we, you know, we definitely want to move forward.
Well, um, that's interesting. They said, you spoke with Jimmy today. Did he say August 1st? Because I, I may have misrepresented that. I've heard that they're supposed to deliver a letter in August.
I think it's August, but we're okay with the month of August. I mean, you know, we want to, we want to know what's going on too, but we just don't want to slow down at this point in case nothing's going out.
Have y'all, Councilwoman Love, have, have y'all already had discussions at council about the funding for the engineering fees?
Other discussion?
I had a question about access. Is it just one road that would access this whole area?
No, ma'am, there's two.
Sorry.
Laura Street to the north to south of that yellow triangle, and then they proposed a little bit closer to Walnut Crest, Long Hall Pike.
I'm assuming you guys have purchased one of those properties to make the connection through there. Okay.
What about the, the concerns that I've raised about the compatibility with the single-family homes adjacent? What's the density of this project compared to the density of this neighborhood adjacent? I guess it's questions for Josh. Are you handling this project?
Yes.
Density, I'm assuming the density of this project is like, what, 4.6, almost five units per acre?
It is lower than the allowed within the MRO district. It is 166 units. About five units an acre.
About five units per acre, okay. And Bill was describing that it buts, single-family dwellings that are, what, half-acre lots, maybe?
There are about 1,500 or 15, 15,000 square foot lots.
Which is basically an R-20 zoning type thing.
Between our 15 and our 20.
Oh, okay. So it's an R-10 zoning with big lots?
It's R-10 zoning, and, and she saw in the exhibit that we provided here, this, you have a handout here as well, is that quite a few of those lots include about half of them in the Walnut Crest area, Long Walnut Crest, and the side streets that feed into it are duplexes. So, we're talking, I, I don't know that all of the lot sizes meet the R-10 requirements, but we also have two units on many of those lots.
Oh, duplexes on the R-15, of the 15,000 square foot lots?
Or on the 10, or 10,000.
I didn't know that was permitted.
In the R-10 zoning district, they do allow for, with a conditional use permit, you have duplexes, R-10 zone lots. And each square footage of those lots, although they have to meet the minimum requirements of the code, they don't require as much area per unit as they would for a single-family home if they built.
And Chair Carrer, these were built in the 1980s before our most current version of our zoning ordinance was created.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to approve with staff's two comments, conditions.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Harris to approve with, did you say two conditions?
I looked for more conditions, I only saw two.
You're right, it's two conditions.
At the PMDP stage, there, there's a lot that gets worked out at the FMDP.
I, I think the responsible thing to do is to, to move it along, knowing that they're willing to work with us in the future on it.
I, I'm, I just want to, under discussion, since we have a motion on the floor, and it was second amendment, Mr. Wilson, I just want to say, y'all, I have no reservations about the applicant, because I know the applicant personally, he is civic-minded, and he is, he served on that same board I was talking about that's worked, Forward Sumner, that's worked towards these goals. Somehow, I feel like I will be deplacious if I vote in favor of it, because I really want to hold off 30, 30 days or so to hear the answer. So if I vote no, it's not because I'm against the project, I just, for 10 years, I can't vote in favor. I'd rather, I'd rather see it hold off 30 days just to see what we get, but I, I have no concern that he'll do the right thing. That being said, you know where I'm.
If this doesn't pass, we could defer it for 30 days. Is that correct?
You can defer something for 30 days, but if I understand the rule, then next time we would have to take action on it because it can't go more than 60 days without an answer, or it's an automatic approval. So kicking it down the road 30 days with a deferral probably still doesn't put you inside the window when you'll get some kind of response from T-Dot. That's why the timing, just, just struggle with the timing of this. I even tried to talk Danny into requesting deferral, but I understand, that's, this is, it's his property.
We'll make the commitment on second reading at council. If we don't have an answer by then, we will ask for the deferral and get through August before we get final. That way the council can take that.
That's appreciated.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, so the, the units are four doors each instead of three doors? The, the ones aren't, that aren't, but in the single-family and the duplexes?
I believe there, there are some two, and then we have four-unit buildings as well as five-unit buildings.
Was that the former Mayor Don Ryan's house? Oh, it is, okay. It's a neat old place. Will the house be, I know it's in, will, will the house be preserved and retained, or is it to be lost?
The house is.
Oh, okay.
Adjacent property to this one.
So we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
There a concern on the higher density of any of that part? With anybody else? I didn't, I just.
I had a concern about higher density until I was told that the adjacent properties are R-10, and there's duplexes on. Yeah, so, no, I was, I was very concerned about the compatibility of the two until they told me that.
So you're saying that duplexes is two doors on one building, properties, but these are five doors on one property? Is that in mind? Is like a fourplex or, I don't know what to call it, a plus fourplex?
Yeah, it's, it's, there's multiple different, multiple sizes, and what they, what they've done is put the duplex units adjacent to the single-family homes to kind of step up the density, so, which is the responsible thing to do there.
Oh, yeah. Have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? We'll call for the vote then. All those in favor of the motion by Mr. Harris to approve with two staff conditions, second amendment, Mr. Wilson indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, no. Two. We have two opposed? Yes, me and Mrs. Hibler.
If we're in, who else?
Myself. But I also know you'll do a good job. Thank you, Danny. Oh, yes. Move on to, I'll be back, but if you'll take 18, move forward with it.
So, item 18 is the Resolution Number 2021-106, Short-Term Rentals Zoning Ordinance Amendment.
Okay, Count, Commissioners, this next request is an proposed amendment to the city's zoning code. This was requested through, initially through the city council, and in May, I think it was the May meeting, or and property owner approached council and asked, had some concerns about a property in town that was being used as a short-term rental, and the operation of that short-term rental created some disturbances in the neighborhood. So they asked about what can be done to control that type of use. So in a nutshell, what's happened is that the state legislature created a, what they call a short-term rental in the statute to allow people to lease their home out or property that they own, almost like a hotel. It's not like a bed and breakfast, and so they created a special category called short-term rental. It's unique from a hotel, and it's unique from a bed and breakfast. It's not something that we had addressed in our code previously. We have bed and breakfast regulations, as well as, of course, hotel and motel regulations, where they're permitted. So the state statute took effect in 2017, I believe it was, and only those communities that had a short-term rental ordinance in effect at that time could retain that operation. Any of those communities that did not have a specific short-term rental that met the definition of the new state statute were governed by the new statute, and that would allow people to operate short-term rentals until a local government came along and then created this ordinance, and that's what we're trying to do here. Now, those existing short-term rentals, provided that they are operating under the state rules and state statute, and they pay business tax, and they are also registered, can continue to operate. So the issue that was brought before council, provided that, that they are operating under the state rules, would be able to continue to do so, and possibly, you know, there'd be another situation where there's disturbance. So we can't really do much with the existing ones, except in situations where they might be determined a nuisance. And the legislature decided that they don't want people calling false accusation against some of these operators. They were fearful that people would, in the neighborhood, would just say, oh, I'm going to shut that down, I'll just call in a disturbance call or something when there maybe wasn't one. So I don't know that that's ever been tested, is if there were, let's say, three disturbance calls or something, and it was founded to be a, maybe a nuisance. I, I'm not aware of any of those instances, but that, that's really what has to happen, is legitimate concerns and nuisance calls and that are verifiable would be the basis for a local government to be able to shut one of those down. So we would propose that, based on some of the comments we had, and didn't get a lot of direction from city council, but I got the feeling that they don't want them in residential areas. So we wrote a restrictive ordinance that allows them in very limited commercial areas, basically, either as permitted use or as a conditional use. So where we allowed them would be in the CS zoning district under certain conditions, and in the PNC under certain conditions with the conditional use permit as, and a permitted use in, in central business district, CC core commercial zone. So for example, some of the residential units on the second floor of some of these buildings to here in downtown, they could operate as a Airbnb, for example. And Airbnb is just a common term that you, sort of like Kleenex, is used for tissue paper. And Airbnb is a company name that provides that type of service. So what we are proposing is that we would create this definition of short-term rental, which pretty much follows the state statute as it's used. pretty much follows the state statute as it's, uh, used in this, uh, code. And then we would also identify that short term rentals as a residential activity, so we're amending that section of code, and, uh, we're identifying in the MROs district, district, excuse me, uh, it would require conditional use for short term rental, and there's, uh, conditions that are, I'll go into those briefly, that would have to be met to obtain a conditional use, and in the mixed use district, it would also require conditional use. It would be a permitted use in the core commercial district, and, uh, also a permitted use in this commercial service district. In the condit, in the planned neighborhood commercial district, it would also require conditional use permit. The operation or conversion, let's say, of a house or something to a, or business, it wouldn't have to necessarily be a house, it could be a commercial, uh, building. For a short term rental would require them to provide, uh, parking in a certain ratio, should we be adjusting that, based on the size of the building? Uh, so, be changes to the parking loading requirements, and then in the short term, or excuse me, the, uh, short term rentals would be further described in the supplementary district regulations for those districts that were permitted, so, um, this gets into the description of what a short term rental is, it creates, uh, establishing short term, or it's a short term rentals, it really just ties it back into the same rules that the statute would have, and that's, like I was telling you, they have complaints and so forth, that they would, couldn't be disqualified for continuing those uses. If, uh, the property sells, that's another provision, if someone who owns a short term rental and sells the house, that ends the short term rental under grandfathering provision, that doesn't mean that they don't, if, if they qualify, uh, in a location, they can certainly go through that process again, but, uh, in a, let's say, a single family residential area, that won't, uh, be allowed to continue operating when that property sells. Well, obviously, we would need some way of tracking where these are, if we start approving these, and we would, uh, also establish a register uh, for short term rentals, and we would also keep a register of the short term rentals that preexisted in the adoption of an ordinance, because we would need to be able to track that if a property sells, or there's those complaints that I was describing earlier. The design requirements for short term rental are listed on page eight of the draft ordinance there, so there are some things that, that would have to occur, of course, uh, with the, uh, correspond with the statute, and they include some minor design requirements, and then, uh, uh, specifications in the administrative enforcement section, uh, we're adding this, as I mentioned earlier, as a residential activity, so, the conditional use standard would then, then be identified in the administrative enforcement section. So, uh, what this does again is, uh, it, it doesn't shut them out completely, but it does put a lot of restrictions on where they can be, and they would not be allowed, uh, in single family districts. So, uh, again, I didn't get a lot of, uh, direction as to where, uh, we should put these things or not put these things, but I got the feeling from council, based on that discussion, that they did not want them in residential. But we have some operating now in town, and, uh, some of them you might not even know they're there. Occasionally, I guess we'll have one that pops up and does create a disturbance, so hopefully with this ordinance, if adopted, we'll, uh, head off any concerns about impacts to particularly residential areas, existing homes and or, uh, some areas that are zoned for that, for residential use.
What was this? What was the catalyst for this, working on this ordinance? Was there an incident, or?
Yes, there, there was, and, uh,
And you may have said that.
Yeah, a resident came before council and, and described their concern that they were having because of the short term rental, creating a disturbance, and asked council to take action to address that, and in this case, this would be the route that we need to follow.
How can you differentiate between a bed and breakfast and a, uh, Airbnb?
The statute did that, the statute has a, actually, there's two, two classes of, of bed and breakfast. Bed and breakfast, uh, there's a larger one, just regular bed and breakfast in, and then, then what the statute calls a bed and breakfast homestay, and we differentiated for those, and they're really about the size, number of rooms and that kind of thing. The big thing with the air, uh, Airbnb type unit versus a bed and breakfast, a bed and breakfast is, uh, a residence that's opened up for someone to stay, but the owner also lives there and provides a meal. Whereas Airbnb is just a vacant home, and there is no owner on site. Or, or required to be an owner on site.
Is there plenty of access to those two zones you mentioned?
Well, uh, you know, MRO is pretty prevalent, prevalent throughout the community, uh, some of the restrictions that we included in supplementary district regulations, uh, might preclude them from operating, uh, in, close to residence, so, uh, there, there's five of them, well, there's really about seven, but two of them are part of one. That, um, you could have no more than two residents per bedroom. So that can, that limits the number of people who could stay there, now that doesn't mean, I don't know how you go about enforcing
No, neither.
People having a party there, they're not staying there, they're just coming there for a certain number of hours, and a limited number of people who actually stay in there. And enforcing that, we're not gonna knock on doors, I, I'm not gonna knock on the door, say, how many people are staying here tonight? So, that kind of thing is, uh, something maybe someone else more qualified than me to, is, is to do, and then we'd also want to have, uh, their hard surface parking be dust free, so you don't just have a gravel lot that, creating other nuisances in the community or neighborhood, if it happens to be in a neighborhood or commercial area, so it'd be hard surface parking. One of the key provisions there is that we would not permit a short term rental adjacent to property primarily used for residential purposes other than the short term rentals in the CS district and the CC district, so, even if you were an MRO, you could be next to, uh, a residential use, because there's a lot of non-residential uses in MRO, you know, offices. Uh, well, if you're in a residential zone, or you're close to somebody, next door to somebody, yes, it is restricted to that. Now, that's one thing I kind of thought, well, would we want to consider this, uh, a permitted use in the agricultural district, which is a minimum lot size of two and a half acres, and a lot of our agriculturally zoned properties, it's, uh, not really something you want to encourage a whole lot of in the city, because they're really not, uh, revenue positive for the city, but for the most part, uh, but, um, you do have a lot of room, and so some of that's concern about noise and other impacts probably are not like you're going to see on a twenty thousand square foot lot. So, uh, you have more opportunity for people to park their cars and that kind of thing. A lot of our agriculturally zoned parcels and lots are much larger than two and a half acres, of course.
The question, the, the incident that started this conversation, was that, was that house at a neighborhood with a homeowners association?
I don't think so, I think it used to have one.
But, that's a good point. My, my, my point being, we, we did our ordinance review on architectural standards, you know, one of the things we talked about is very, it really affected a small percentage of the city, um, because the majority of neighborhoods have homeowners associations, so, you know, I'd raise the question is, you know, is this an issue for, you know, residential areas with HOAs that they should be the ones to decide if they want to allow it in their neighborhood or not?
I mean, if a nature, if a, if a homeowners association has that in their rule, then.
Yeah, that's already.
Yeah.
It can be restricted, but, you know, that, that doesn't mean that, um, and, and in the case, I guess, that was brought before council, that someone is, uh, you know, trying to create a homeowner association after the fact, it's quite difficult, and, and it's, it's possible that the whole neighborhood would, uh, agree to do that simply to keep a, uh, a short term rental out, but except for that one property owner, they would never.
They could also choose to create HOA to enforce stricter architecture.
No, you have to have a hundred percent, that's the problem with retroactive.
Okay, you know, I understand, I.
I, so, I mean, it would, it would disqualify a lot of the older neighborhoods, but they would have to be the ones who would have to endure that.
Is it possible for us to have an ordinance that allows HOAs to decide for themselves, so we're, you know, we have an ordinance that protects neighborhoods without an HOA, but if, if you have your plantation, for instance, like the idea of short term rentals, and the residents wanted to allow it, then they could have that option?
I, I'm not sure that.
I just, I just have a hard, you know, I have a hard time restricting people's use of their property if, if they have purchased it and decided it's how they want to use it, if they're in a neighborhood that would.
I'm in a neighborhood without a homeowners association, and I would not want my neighbors to have a party house in my neighborhood, so I, I kind of agree with what was brought to us in that.
Is this in, come, is this the direction most communities are going, is to, to push back against Airbnb, um, or is this just us?
Well, they can, but, uh, they can for for communities that want to restrict them.
This.
And there are those that preexisted any adoption of an ordinance that we're stuck with until one of these total events happens.
Instead of trying to fix something when it's too late, you deal with that all the time.
Not tell us that Hendersonville had something, and maybe Springfield or Lebanon?
Uh, yeah, Franklin or Brentwood, I think, and we provided a copy of the Hendersonville ordinance, now Hendersonville adopted their ordinance a little bit before the state created the statute, so Hendersonville's, any, any more restrictive, uh, ordinance that preexisted in the statute can continue enforce. Uh, they can amend it, of course, but, uh, they have those restrictions now, under their ordinance that, uh, protect, uh, their community, I suppose.
You talked to the county to see what their position is in this?
No, I haven't talked with, uh, some of the counties.
Well, I don't know about that, counties, counties on the way on the planning. They've come a long way on their. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the Hendersonville ordinances was approved in twenty sixteen, and, and that's included in your agenda package there, but it's very short and right to the point.
You know, I wasn't here for work study, y'all have already talked about this once, I guess this is really new to me. And I was, I was surprised that there would be restrictions against it, but it sounds to me like it's more of an issue that council's gonna decide this anyway, right? We're just making recommendations.
True, yeah.
This is really a council issue. And, uh, I'm gonna abstain, I don't have an opinion with it. I'm not sure I have my head wrapped around that. Limiting people's use of the property, but you said there's a real concern.
And, in, as, as far as renting it out for party houses?
So it's more than just one, we're not reacting to one incident?
Uh, there was, I think, discussion about more, these happening more, but there was one specific event adjacent to or close by the person who appeared before council, and he was not happy about what was going on.
Not already a, a nuisance ordinance that would stop that type of party, anyway?
There is, uh, we do have any, pretty broad, Latasha might be wanting to speak to this, but the statute was pretty clear about, I mean, it was pretty clear about, uh, wanting to prohibit persons from making a false claim. Now, I don't know where you draw the line between a false claim and a legitimate claim, but they, the legislature at least seemed to indicate that they're not just gonna allow people to complain about it when it's not an issue, or not a nuisance type issue, I, I don't know where you draw that line, who makes that decision?
Ms. Alexander, I don't ever want to put you on the spot, do you want to weigh in, because I'm sure you've been dealing with this and are studying this and making recommendations?
Uh, it's not, uh, this has pretty much been driven, from my understanding, by the city council, they want an ordinance on book, on the books regarding short term rentals, from my understanding, um, I think Bill said expressly, from my understanding, there's just been one major incident which led to it coming before the city council, and there was a lot of discussion there, which Miss Susan Homicoli would be more, uh, able to give more information, but I know our office is also looking at this and has been looking at it, and they are requesting that a ordinance be placed on the books. Uh, from my understanding, it is pretty restrictive in residential areas, as Mr. Harris stated, most HOAs control this, so it really is more for a, or residents without HOAs, because they are controlled by HOAs. So regardless of what this body decides, it's something that city council is interested in putting on the books ASAP.
Is, is there, is there a way to make a provision in an ordinance that allows for a neighborhood with an HOA to allow this activity, but restrict in areas without an HOA?
I think you can, uh, incorporate that into the ordinance if they choose to, I mean, I think you could, but as it's written right now, it would not matter if they, we have a.
Wanted, but.
Right.
I just, I have a hard time, you know, telling people that they can't use their property. You know, if we have, if we already have an ordinance for, uh, nuisances, because someone's throwing a party, whether it was happening near rental, or it was somebody's own home, it seems like the, the incident that started the conversation, there's other ways to deal with it without taking and putting a blanket over the entire city that restricts people's use of their property.
Which is why it's important for this body to make those recommendations to the city council, because you do deal with planning and you do, um, focus on the, uh, property rights of owners and the development, and that's why it's important for y'all to make some recommendation to them regarding this zoning ordinance.
Well, then, in that case, I'm gonna make a, a, a motion to approve, and the reason for, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
You need to open up the public comment.
Absolutely right, thank you. It's not all open to public comment, if there's anybody in the public who wishes to speak in regards to this item, please come forward and state your name to the record, see. Oh, we do have one, I'm sorry, thank you, I'm so sorry. Literally did not see you, please do.
Suzanne Simon, four seventeen, Franciscan Way. I do think these can be a big nuisance, and I do think because of the other people that have to deal with it, that it is good to restrict it, I mean, Bill's giving them conditional use permit opportunities, so they can find ways to use it without disrupt, disrupting, um, subdivisions and people's homes, um, and some builders, like in my subdivision, they're still in control of the HOA and not the residents, so I don't, I don't want to see a provision that doesn't let, um, that lets the HOA make that decision, because the homeowners don't get a choice in that circumstance, so, thank you.
And your name again?
Suzanne.
Suzanne, I want to apologize to you when I'm rushing through that, I honestly thought that was only staff sitting at the table, so there was nobody.
I am staff, I'm sorry, but I'm also resident, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, CJ Merle, I live at seven one four Hamilton Drive, and I just want to add, so I am a owner of, uh, short term rental, not in the city of Gallatin, but outside of the city of Gallatin, and I think, uh, a lot of people view them wrong, they, uh, most short term rental property owners take a lot of pride in their property, and they strictly prohibit partying and things of that nature. I don't think I would want someone at my house having a party, let alone my short term rental having a party, so, um, and I'm fairly certain that most companies like Airbnb and things like that also prohibit it. Um, so like Mr. Harris was saying. Uh, that nuisances aren't, aren't allowed already. Um, I, I'm, I'm not necessarily saying that I'm, I'm against this, but. I do weigh heavily on the fact that like property owners should have the right. To do what they want with their property under certain guidelines. And I do know that, and I don't know if, if the city has even discussed this yet, but at my short term rental. Uh, we're required to register that short term rental with. The city that we're in, also the county that we're in, and are required to pay taxes to the city and the county. As well as also pay taxes on the income that we get from that property. So I don't know if that has been discussed necessarily. Uh, from that standpoint. Uh, but I think it is something that should be discussed. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Good day. Good day. Let me finish the public. I mean, is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak in regards to this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public.
Go ahead, Mr. Harris.
Rest of that the first time.
I didn't want to. It's quite all right, so. Is there any, any thought to? To instead of having an ordinance that prohibits, but having, you know. Having in, in, you know, taking a, a first step of, you know, creating a registry and the taxes and. More the rules that if you are going to operate. A short term rental in a neighborhood where the HOA allows it. That it has to be registered and there's some rules so that if someone operates one that's not registered, then the city has an enforcement right. To be able to shut that one down if it was a problem. You know, before we, you know, this is an intermediate, intermediate step before we just say you can't have them at all. You know, or be very restrictive, but just to have, you know, first step of, you know, having to register and. You know, have a business license and those types of things operated and then, you know, if it does become a larger scale problem, putting more restriction. I, I, I just think it's a, an awful big step to go from zero to no.
If you limit the residential. Access, you cut down on. Each number of potential. Problems. We, we have a noise ordinance, we have light ordinance, we have hours associated with all that. But if you're trying to use that to manage it, you're using it sort of after the fact, you're having a big party. This love is calling the police, you know, at eleven o'clock and somebody's going over there, so the neighborhood has been. Disrupted after the fact instead of when they, when they get before the fact.
So could we not have a? Part of our, you know, as having a registry or short term rental, that if you have a violation, then your, your permit's gone and you, you can't have it anymore.
Keep in mind that our noise ordinance would permit the people at the short term rental to be as loud as all daddies. That's a heck of a party. Um, so I don't know that you can fall back on the noise ordinance, but the reason I was about to make a motion to approve this or this proposal. Proposal ordinance is written is because of what we want. The other day we were talking about, uh, what is the role of the planning commission and I said that in my opinion, I felt like it was to support council, council sets the direction and vision and then we. Um, uh, come up with how it's. Make a recommendation of how it's to be implemented. Council's obviously made it clear that they want a. Restriction on the Airbnb, not the question of whether we need one or not, but that's just how I see. Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve. But still discussion, if there's discussion, a lot of, we want to see.
So some people did voice different things to be added to this or incorporated into that. Can we put that with the motion?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. To tweak it and improve it.
Yeah, I didn't know about, I'm, I'm Hendersonville too, so I was learning about both of them at the same time, but it was more of a. Nashville bleeding over concern. That's what they were looking at and different things, but if our, like you're, the different ordinances that we already have established, don't really help. And they want something, so we give them that, but also. Curtail the, the restrictions to residential, like making the, the noise or whatever it is. But as long as we can enforce it, if you can enforce different things, it's, it's different, but definitely a registration. And definitely a permit for education because some people, like say if I have a house and I do this to my house and I'm not through a company. I wouldn't know, I'm just, you know, doing something off the side of my head, don't know, you have to have a business license, don't know these things. You need to make sure people are educated about that, so that. Set the permit from our, my understanding, permit does the education, then you come and say, hey, this is my building, this is what I'm doing with this, and they're aware of all that. Does that make sense?
Are you suggesting that it should be modified to allow it within the residential district if they have a permit? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, it was two different statements, the, the permit required period if you're using it, if you're planning on using it for this purpose. So you're educated and have that information, but then I was saying also have conditional. Like different conditional, like the nuisance, the noise restriction, making it residential based and not like all that is a commercial, because that's different. You can't really restrict hours, I guess.
What we do have a noise ordinance and it is a little more restrictive in residential areas than commercial areas.
That's what.
varies throughout the day, so at night, obviously, it's, you know, quieter.
No, I didn't know it differentiated.
You know, the city council was going to spy and tune this thing.
Well, that's good, that's. Cause I, I really wasn't sure where they wanted to go with it and there may be a lot of other. Design criteria and word operating restrictions that they want to impose.
A lot of what we're discussing may just be a moot point. Because. If we approve it, it's going to them. If we don't approve it, it's going to them.
Did you write, not from scratch, but did you adopt another city's ordinance and?
Um, I didn't, I, I did review the two that we have that were adopted before the statute. And I just read through the statute thoroughly to see where, what opportunities we might have to. Place restrictions and then, and I didn't get the feeling that council was too concerned about them in other than residential areas. But there's a lot of limits of properties in, in commercial areas. Now, we do have one, I'll, I'll mention there's one on, uh. And Brian's looking through the whole book. He's looking, I don't know which site he's on, but he's looking at where they are, Airbnb. And we have some in the commercial, the commercial zoning district. There's one on Northwater and you probably, you know, it's going on. There is, but it's in a, it's not in a residential district. Now, it might be too close to a residence because, uh. Essentially, once you're off the Northwater corridor, everything on the other side is residential. So it may not qualify under our current ordinance, but it's a grandfather, be one of those grandfathers.
I'm sure you've already looked on Airbnb to see, uh, how many, uh, current Airbnbs in the residential district, well, there's ordinance, uh, eighty six overnight.
Uh, I didn't get the specific address. They don't tell you the specific address because, uh. They kind of show you in the neighborhood that they're in and general. Location. But, uh, I, I'm not sure if that's a security issue or what, but. Of how, of how they operate, but I mean, the pricing and stuff is not really a concern for us and some are pricey. Per day. Yeah, it does, it does mention is, I think it's a thirty day. Up to a thirty day period, so. Obviously, if they're throwing parties and stuff like that, I mean, I've been doing it for thirty days.
You were asked by council to put something together. And I know you personally be a person who's respected private property rights and you're a good planner. Do you like what you have here? I know, I'm asking you for an opinion as, as your, as the city planner.
Well, I mean, I do, it does have some provisions and it's, like I said, it's very restrictive. It's, it's meant to protect the residents primarily.
Putting you on the spot if I'm asking you as the city planner, if you feel like it's too restrictive, is that an appropriate question?
Don't answer that. I, I didn't write it for my own purposes. Obviously, my own property in town, because I live in town, uh, wouldn't qualify under this ordinance. And I don't operate a Airbnb now, so.
I am, I don't have any problem with, with a short term rental of somebody that moves to town and is just needs a place for thirty days while they're waiting. On, uh, something else to come along. I think the real problem is just protecting the rights of the other. Resident owners against these big parties and. Maybe driving bad, you know, just, just what, you know, many, many things.
I, I go back to my kind of point, the thing is, you know, to protect the other property owners, do we have to go this restrictive to accomplish? If that's, if that's the goal, is it necessary to go this far? I don't think it is.
The other cities that you looked into have restricted in the residential areas.
Um, the, the two I looked at was the Brentwood and Hendersonville, and you have the Hendersonville ordinance and. That was pre, they, they adopted one prior to the statute, so there's this. They're restricted, yes, and you'll see on, I can't reach attachment. Near the back of the.
Picking this can down the road.
After a game. I missed the work study and now I realize I really need to dive into this and study it more. I don't feel comfortable voting for my own motion. Would you please consider withdrawing your second? All right, I withdraw my motion because I.
Like a motion.
I make a motion to defer.
Yeah, make a motion to.
I second that because I really want to study it now.
I, I would also like some time to look at it.
City council was gonna blow by whatever you guys come up with.
No, I don't really think they're wanting.
I, I think that, I think they're, our job is to, to advise, to provide input so they can make a good decision.
Sure. Um, I was just, I, I'm sorry, I said sidebar conversation. I was asking councilwoman Love if there was a real urgency at council, uh, if it was a. Ending issue. There doesn't seem to be. We have a motion to defer a second about Mr. Harris. Any discussion on that? Seen none, coughed a vote, all in favor of deferring the item, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. One note, understand.
Make the motion, yeah.
I made the motion. Mr. Harris made the second. And I'll study it really hard for July. With that being said, is there any other business or announcements?
Oh, I don't think I had any other than, I wanted to mention, I was gonna wait until work session, I guess, is why, but I'm bringing it on you now. On the twenty eighth. Which is, uh, the last Tuesday in July, twenty eighth of July. The. Uh, greater Nashville Regional Council will present a kind of an introduction of the draft comprehensive plan. So this will be a meeting that will precede the council meeting, which normally starts at six o'clock, so this meeting will be between. Five and six, and I think it's important for the planning commission to be there and see what they have to say. To me is very, uh, preliminary. Lot of work I think is gonna still be needed after that presentation, a lot of refinements and. Uh, you know, we're only limited to an hour, so. There'll probably be more workshop sessions and then we'll be talking about it at length. So some of our work sessions, particularly the one in August. And, uh, maybe September as well will, will contain hopefully a lot of discussion about the comp plan. The big things I think we really need to focus on are. Goals, objectives and policies that are identified. And also what we're waiting on still right now is a, a capital improvements program or infrastructure element of the plan that I haven't seen yet, so. Uh, when, and when I do get it, I won't have much time to review it between now and that, the meeting before council. Cause I'm going on vacation, so.
Did you say July twenty eighth?
Twenty, twenty eighth, I think is the correct, is it the twenty sixth or twenty eighth? Twenty eighth is a council date, yeah, it's the last one of the month there.
I'll be camping, sorry.
So, uh, that's gonna be important. I don't know what kind of information we'll be able to distribute at that time or if we will have anything to distribute, but. Is it, I'm sure it'll be, uh. Uh, Michael Skipper's presentation and it'll be displayed on the screen and a lot of, you'll see a lot of the stuff that you've seen already. Particularly photographs that represent best management practices and what we're trying to achieve. And so, uh, be on the lookout for that, so. Months advance.
We have any kind of commitment from them to have this process, the whole process completed by the end of the year?
Yes, that's the, that's, there is a schedule that would have an adoption. The comp plan, of course, planning commission would be, uh, adopting it per statute. And, and replacing the one that we have now. And then council has also indicated that they are going to move forward and adopt it as well, so it becomes council policy. Okay, maybe it's twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh would be a Tuesday.
Well, we know it's the end of the month.
It's the last Tuesday of the month.
Oh, it's the twenty seventh. They're already going.
Okay.
Last question, is there any, um. Is there a Tampa Fall Conference?
Uh, yeah, I asked about that today. Uh, that is the. Believe the first. Week of October, so it's a joint conference. It might be more enticing for y'all. It's gonna be in Chattanooga and it will be not just the Tennessee APA, but it's also the Georgia APA. Uh, you know, of course, Georgia is a bigger state than we are and a lot more things going on there, maybe in. Other things going on there, let's put it that way.
First week of October.
Uh, first week of October. Yeah, it'll be pretty interesting. Uh, I'm not sure when Tennessee and Georgia play that year, maybe it's that weekend.
Yeah, I'm camping again.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll get you more information about that. And, uh, hopefully y'all will be able to attend. We got, we have funds, uh, set aside in the budget for y'all to attend those events and that's. Should be one of the better ones we've had since it's gonna be much larger.
They're always good.
Count for our training.
Yes, it certainly does. And so I encourage you to, I really do want to encourage y'all to attend one of these events. Not just to pop in in the afternoon like you have the opportunity now, but really to go. Meet other folks and discuss issues, uh, particularly with the broader agenda that they may have.
Early October, they might be running the trains too. Speed trains.
Oh, well, they do that all the time anyhow.
I, I, I won't be able to go to that one in the fall, but I will tell you, the Tampa conferences. When we've been to Johnson City and Chattanooga and Fall Creek Falls. I've learned more of those than any training opportunities we've had. Those have been great, so encourage you to go. If there's no other announcements or other business, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank y'all.
Okay. I have to read it slow. I have to read it slowly and highlight stuff. So.